All right, so um tonight I wanted to come and get an update um on mainly the senior home repair program. So as of Friday last week, we have exhausted all of our time. I'm gonna give you the numbers of what we've been able to help to date, um and what we currently still have open. So we assisted two hundred and seventy-five senior households with an average grant amount of seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. Of that two hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and twenty-two projects are fully completed. Um, we've got thirty-nine applications that are pending inspection from the county inspector to go out so we can release final payment. We've got a hundred and fifty-three projects that are still in progress. So what that means is they may have one project completed, but may have another project open, or they may have multiple projects that are open and we're waiting completion for those. Applications that we denied were a hundred and eighty-five applications. These were individuals who were deemed to be over income, over the fifty percent target income area. And we have three hundred and eighty-five applications still pending. So as of now, because we are out of money, those three hundred and eighty-five individuals will receive a notice to let them know that we were not funding. So um we kinda knew this going in, just the sheer number of applications that we had were well over eight hundred applications. There was never enough funding to to fund all of those applications. But I think overall with an average of seventeen thousand dollars a grant, I think that's amazing. I know we originally had talked about a fifteen thousand dollar cap and we made thirty thousand, but even with that thirty thousand dollar cap, we were able to have an average of seventeen thousand five twenty-six forty-eight. Now what that means is obviously some seniors got the full amount depending on the need and what they were able to express, while others didn't get the full amount because they didn't have that need. Projects ran again from HVAC systems to roofs to bathroom shower installs. Um unfortunately, there are gonna be a number of seniors that are gonna be disappointed because we weren't able to get to their projects in time before the funding went out. Um, we do have a hundred thousand dollars in reserve and we're keeping a hundred thousand dollars because we've seen that projects are running over sometimes. So say for instance, we approve a roof, they tear the roof off, they find additional damage, they come back and say we need an additional two thousand dollars to fix that. Because we have a hundred and fifty-three projects still out there, we thought we needed to keep some money to the side because if we don't, if we expend that money, any additional costs would be borne by the senior and we don't think that that's fair. Um, that being said, once all the projects are closed out, any remaining money on that hundred thousand dollars will obviously go back to the county. Um, but we anticipate just looking at some of the overages that we've seen, that that hundred thousand dollars will be enough an additional. I mean, just last week, we had four additional requests for uh funding from finding load behind the wall after they went in the wall to a bathroom, to finding fire damage under a roof that they didn't know was existing that they needed to repair. So um obviously those things have to be fixed in order to complete the project. So we we thought it was prudent to keep a certain amount of money over to the side to make sure that that's covered. Um, overall, we would've spent four million eight hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. That that means once you add that hundred thousand that we're holding to the side, it'll be four point nine one nine. The other money that's missing from that other five million went to Family Connect, purchased the laptop computers, all the other expenses that were associated with the senior home repair that were outside of hypermetrics that came out of that five million dollars that you all allocated. Um, so that's kind of where we are with senior home repair. We will provide a final report once all of these projects are closed out. Um, it'll be a very detailed report. It'll have the foreign actor pictures, it'll have testimonials. There'll be a section in what we learned from this program, what we could do better from this program. Um, it'll be very detailed and we'll get that to you. We wanted to wait until all of the projects were completed before we had an opportunity to get that report. Um, so that being said, um are there any questions about what I presented? That's fine.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, any questions? Uh, Commissioner Sanders?
I have a question about the ARK. We put in a hundred thousand, are sorry about the mental health. Have you received any contacts for anyone to look at any people that are running mental health affairs and so forth? I know we have the money sitting there for behavior health, mental health, dealing with our company, getting a training and all that stuff. Have you heard anything?
I have not. I've not heard any movement on that. Um, I don't think you all have changed that budget amount. I know we changed the budget a few times, but I thought we kept some money in that line item.
A hundred, two hundred thousand.
I think so. But yeah, we've not done any programming on that line item.
And it has to be allocated by end of year.
It's gotta be allocated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. So by December thirty-first, we need to find somewhere to put that money, some organization to put that money towards. We're gonna keep it in that mental health line.
There were many mental health organizations in County County also, so that was based on vote. It's supposed to go with training our sheriff department on how to deal with mental health constituents. So I I would love to see that move because we did adopt mental health as a crisis area in the county, so we can even make that move.
I think the last that I remember on that front was that we were gonna check with the sheriff's office to see what that would look like. Liability wise, having a social worker at the home with a police officer for calls that they thought met threshold of being, you know, a mental health call. Um, I don't, I've not received any additional information on what that looks like, but I mean.
There's counties that I would do it, there's actually a structure, I have a big there, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, we do it in Detroit, so if it can be done, it's just getting the sheriff's office on board what that looks like and then being um okay with it. Because obviously maybe the sheriff's guy okay because they gotta ride along with them, but.
Yeah, I believe, I don't know, that I'm an operations, I don't know, and I mean.
I've had a discussion, did ask him.
Gotcha.
Uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you for this report, we appreciate um the updates. Um, do you have in your recording the amount of monies that we gave to Viewpoint Health?
So I don't have a broken doubt for Viewpoint Health, but I'm looking at what Brittany provided to me. Um, looking at where Viewpoint and Rainbow Community got a total of one point one million.
Because to my understanding, I thought that the money that we gave to Viewpoint Health.
Was self-related.
Was mental health related. So I don't really ever recall there being a separate mental health budget or line item. Is that?
So I think that we do recall there being a line item for the police mental health program. It was like a hundred thousand, and we thought about, I think we left that there because we wanted the sheriff to come back to let us know how the money, if that was enough money for one, and two, how feasible it would be liability wise for that cap. That's my last remembrance of what it was, but you you are correct in that Viewpoint Health was mental health services that we ordered.
So the amount that you were referring to, the hundred thousand, is just gonna be towards police? It's not giving to towards any other nonprofit mental health organization, is that correct?
And it was targeted towards a partnership with the police.
Okay, so not so that we, that line item for mental health, that is correct. So it's supposed to be whatever we have left for mental health is supposed to be just for the police and not for any other nonprofits that uh do mental health work to be able to receive any of those funds.
Correct, that's my.
Okay, I just wanna provide a level of clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sanders, okay, Commissioner.
If you can, just go ahead and um I mean, our county clerk can pull those records because it doesn't say mental health in organizations. We actually voted for this on tape. So one of the things that we talked about was the possibility of working those various organizations that I'm speaking of work with the chair. They work with them in accountability court. And actually this line item came from our former accountability court, Robert Fox. This is where it came from. And so all of that is in place and they work with all these entities, these nonprofit partners, to provide that service for mental health that also deals with the sheriff office. And we all know on the NACO, ACG, we have nonprofit partners that deal with certain specters of the community.
Uh, Commissioner, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Ms. Kenny, you know, normally you said we figured we'd focus on the uh uh the uh the help, uh seniors, senior home repair. And typically when you, in a a program, you normally uh you said that you want to learn about um uh about programs and how people feel. So how how we, how will you kind of, I guess, find out out of the hundred and thirty-eight, I think it says something like that, the people who won't get their home repaired? So how can they come, are they supposed to continue to call me in the home or are you gonna call, are you gonna uh shut down? Window open so they can kind of vent their frustration and then maybe not receiving it? I thought once we had the committee and you, county manager, in the in the term, whereas people who were turned out for whatever reason, they could appeal and talk you through the process and so they could kind of get more information on the reason why it turned out. So is that, is that still going on here?
Yes, so we, the committee has the extra time to have an appeal. Um, the the denial that we're gonna go out for the three hundred and eighty-five individuals, that's because we exhausted funding, there really is no appeal to that other than we use financial funding. The hundred and eighty-five individuals who were denied were based on denial of income and they had a right to appeal. Some of them did appeal, others chose not to appeal. The other appeal rights extended to those contractors. We had some contractors who were deemed to be ineligible toward the program. The reason those contractors were deemed to be ineligible because it was either bid rigging or they were not responsible. Being they had put an estimate into a senior, we called them to give them a contract, they never called us back. We called them, they never called us back. It was holding up the project, so we finally told the senior they needed to go and find a different contractor. For bid rigging, all of the contractors had a right to appeal and we had a number of contractors come before the appeal committee and Patrick and county manager Cooper and myself, and it was a citizen member on that committee and we heard those appeals and made decisions based on those appeals. Um, every, every contractor had a right to appeal, some chose not to, others did. And when they appealed, he took it to the committee and the committee made a decision on what that process was going to be. But to answer your question, we do plan on doing a survey. This will be a survey that will be shot to every single applicant and it will ask them about their experience. Obviously, we're gonna get some negative responses for those who weren't funded, we expect that. Um, but we do wanna know about the process. No process is perfect. Icarimetrics knows that, you all know that. What we can learn from this project is how we could've done this project better. But overall, we assisted two hundred and seventy-five senior households with house over repairs that are necessary for their health and safety. I wanna reiterate, the purpose of this funding was to address health and safety. This money is COVID-nineteen money. The way I was able to even tie this back to COVID-nineteens, during the pandemic, where are you gonna be? Home. You're gonna be sheltering in place. We cannot have seniors sheltering in homes that were not safe for their habitation. Thus, we have this program, we have seniors that were asking for things where we could make that argument that it was a health and safety issue. Some of them wanted new kitchen cabinets, some of them wanted granite countertops. I understand they want, but there was some health and safety requirement attached to that. And so those, those who cares were denied and those that did demonstrate a health and safety uh issue, they were approved. That is a very hard decision to make, to tell one person they can get money and the other they can't. But that's the role of Icarimetrics in making that determination and we took very good case notes and made very good case of that's why that is. The other thing I wanna express to you all so that you understand, we are not a party to these contracts. Seniors go out and get two contractors. We tell them you have to go with the lowest contractor. The senior signs that contract with that contractor. The county is not a party to that contract. We don't wanna be, because had we been a party to that contract, the county would've had to RFP all of those contractors. So all we are are the fiduciary, we make the payment on behalf of the applicant. Now what happens when there's a disagreement between the applicant and the contractor? I'm a peacemaker, that's all I can be. I talk to the applicant, I talk to the contractor. What can you do to come up with a happy medium so that the contractor's happy and I can pay them and the homeowner's happy and I can pay them? My hands are tied to an extent because if the work is completed and your inspector goes out and says the work is completed, I've gotta pay that contractor. I cannot withhold payments to that contractor if they've done the work that they were contracted for. Now there may be disagreements between the homeowners of, well, I didn't want it that way, or I don't like the way that it looks. That's not a valid reason for us not to pay contractors because what can happen then is that contractor can put a lien on that individual's house because the contract is between the homeowner and the contractor. County's not a member of that contract. So a lot of times when you have disgruntled applicants that are not happy with the work and shit, that's everybody, right? They're probably a contractor, they come in and do the work and they do crappy work. What are you doing there, right? You try to fight that before the contractor says, hey, you need to come and get this stuff. We are using what leverage we have by holding that second payment to these contractors to get them back out, to fix these things. Overall, we've been very, I I would say overall ninety-five percent of the projects have not had an issue. We have had five percent projects where individuals have not been happy with the work that the contractors have provided. Or a contractor has come out and did a job, they got the job, and sent a whole other crew to do the work. So this senior is thinking, you know, Mr. Johnson, he came out and gave my estimates, who's gonna come out and do the work? Well, Mr. Johnson seems a quirk and these are people they've never met before. They didn't come to the estimate, so they're calling us saying, you sent somebody else that we didn't hit. No, it's the same company, they just work for that company. So, you know, again, because we're not parties to that contract, our hands are tied in what we can and can't do. I will always call an advocate on behalf of the applicant because this is their program. But my hands are tied, I mean, our county inspectors go out and say, the work's done. You know, you may not like the color or the shower, but the towel's laid and I gotta pay him for the work that he did, so. I just wanted to assign those new lines of this society program.
Well, a second question is, that um it was my understanding from some people said that we, under the senior home repair, they went out and repaired uh uh rims, their homes, some of their homes were rental, um, did we do none of that?
Everybody had to show proof that this was their primary residence. We asked for a utility bill and we asked for the driver's license. So if somebody's, you know, slipped through and said that this was their primary residence, obviously we didn't go out and knock on everybody's door and make sure that they live there. We can only go by with the documentation substantiated. Now, if you're familiar with individual applicants, you lie on your application. There lies the problem because they lie on a federal application for a federal grant and that's a force of this to call.
Absolutely, and so someone told me and like said, I didn't know enough to go out and physically look at. He told me that because of the uh low standard of just the address and the driver's license, that we were actually repairing some rental property too well. So I don't know um how somebody might um check into it or if he wanted to check into it.
We, we also asked for a copy of the, so that he had to be individual's name. And then we also checked the online records from the county to show who registered owner for that property was. The D E and that system had to match. So if you show me a D E, you show me a driver's license with that address on it and you show me a utility bill, then you tell me, you assert in that application that this is your primary residence, that's really all we can go off of.
My next, my next question is Howard of the uh, what is it, twenty-one meeting, I mean, I was here, the amount of months?
Oh, twenty-one point eight.
Twenty-four eight B and Howard.
Seven. Twenty-one half seven hundred and four.
Really, okay. Howard of the accurate power major, how did they make the note, I mean, the amount of money, the outsourced, whether the citizens, you can.
One million forty dollars. So five percent, a little less than five percent.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I I wanted to take the liberty or take the opportunity to go back and look at the actual email that you sent to us back on July the twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three that actually shows the complete spreadsheet uh that we voted on. Uh, and of course, we talked about supporting public health expenditures, uh addressing negative economic impacts caused by COVID-nineteen pandemic, water, sewer and broadband infrastructure, premium pay for essential workers, of course, the amount that we would pay our our Icarimetrics, as well as revenue recovery projects that we actually talked about funding as well with these ARCA funds. And so when I look at this that you sent to us back on July the twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three, uh, we do have a line item for COVID vaccination incentive program, COVID incentive program marketing and promotion, as well as law enforcement mental health program. But when you look at this spreadsheet, those three line items were completely blanked. So we never actually allocated funds for those. Now, it says we have a total of twenty-one million, seven hundred and four, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars to be exact, which is the amount of ARCA funds that we receive. As of July the twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three, we have already allocated twenty million, three hundred and fifty-eight and thirty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents, which we did not allocate. In that twenty million uh that we have already allocated, when you look at the spreadsheet, those three line items for uh COVID vaccination incentive program, COVID incentive program marketing and promotion, law enforcement mental health program, those three line items are completely blank. So we may have voted on it to say, yes, we wanted to put money to those specific areas, but we never put monies in those specific three line items. Uh, and as of that time, uh, we had one million, three hundred and forty-six uh thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-three cents remaining, which I'm not sure if we've allocated those amount as of yet, but as of July the twentieth, we did not allocate any monies towards the uh mental health, the law enforcement mental health program.
So I just wanted to clarify. I'm glad you brought that up because now you're jogging my memory. We originally had obligated funding, but then we decided to move that funding back into the pot because remember we talked about, uh, at that time, we had reached out to the health department and they said that there was no need to offer COVID incentives at that point in time because people who were gonna get the vaccine were gonna get a fifty dollars and a little change tomorrow. And I think we ended up putting those three line items back into the bucket and saying we'd revisit it at a later date if we wanted to then find it. I think that's wrong.
Yeah. So I just wanted to put that on the record that yes, we may have added that or said that that was a line item that we wanted to address, but as of July twentieth of two thousand and twenty-three, there was no funds allocated towards that particular program. And as a matter of fact, this spreadsheet says that Viewpoint Mental Health receives four hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly, that's how much they got.
So that is what they receive and that is kind of what we utilize to help address that mental health concern here in New York County. So I just wanna put that on record and specify that that is actually what this program did. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Uh, Commissioner Mason, if you don't want us to support mental health in the sheriff office, we don't have to, not just here. But we did actually do an actual law, we can get that from our county clerk, it would be in in session. We actually did a resolution to support our residents. Mental health, uh, Viewpoint Health is a national facility. And if you actually vote Viewpoint Health, it doesn't support all age limits. It also does not support our sheriffs and our deputies going out to fight and have training for our mental illness constituents. So that's what it's set for. We actually have meetings at NACO recently, you said that, them talking about mental health and helping our constituency and making sure that law enforcement can have the tools they need versus when they see someone have an episode, they don't think that they are acting out. That's what it's about. It's not about giving it to a builder to make sure that our law enforcement is equipped to handle the situation. Now, if you're against it, that's on you, I I can't force you to do that. But going to the uh bid rigging, can you mention some of the things that happened or what's on the case of bid rigging?
So we had scenarios where, um, and I'm not gonna mention any contractor's names, but a contractor submitted an estimate. Then the homeowner submitted another estimate, the second estimate, but it, they inadvertently left the contract, the original contractor's email on top of the second estimate. So you can see where that estimate was actually invoiced by the first contractor. And when you look at the templates, they're the exact same, all they did was change the company name at the top. And obviously, one is thirty thousand dollars while one is, you know, twenty-nine thousand five hundred and the one contractor was obviously the lowest one. We also had a scenario where we had an invoice that was submitted and it just looked funny. So our, we called the contractor and said, hey, you know, we're gonna ask you about a a proposal you went out and did a quote. I've never been to that house, I've never provided a quote. Come to find out, I asked him, hey, do you know this other contractor? He don't know that. He submitted the the secondary quote using his friend's company, but obviously didn't tell his friend and his friend had never been out there. Um, we had another situation where the contractor pretty much admitted on the phone that uh he got his brother to write an estimate, his brother had never been out to the property and he thought that that was okay. If we explained to him that it wasn't, this was a federal program, it needed to be separate. He agreed that he would remove himself and his brother's company uh filed a running for that. We did have a number of applicants that were affected by that. So if he found an application that had a bar contractor, we contacted that applicant and said, unfortunately, you have to find another contractor. We gave them time to do that. But obviously, we wanna make sure that this program is very, it's it's competitive. And as a federal program, you have to have two separate estimates. You can't have contractors in cahoots and having conversations amongst each other and submitting two estimates to guarantee work goes to my contractor. So whenever we were able to identify that, we they, we send a letter to the contractor saying, you know, we have reason to believe that this is a a product of bid rigging, who have a right to appeal. Some contractors appealed and they gave us their shield about what happened and I gave it to the committee and we listened to it and we made a decision and we voted whether or not to believe them or not to believe them based on the evidence that was provided. So they had a right of due process. Everybody always has a right of due process, contractors as well as applicants. Um, and so those were some examples of some of the bid rigging. There were only a few contractors that we removed for non, um, for being non-heans, so not responding back. We had another contractor who called and said he wanted to remove himself from the program and he had, he had had too much work. He couldn't get any more jobs. Um, and so a lot of these contractors kind of were themselves then because there's money out there, right? And not only does this help seniors, but this also helps the sure contractor community. Um, this could very well have been a contractor program as much as it was for senior home repair because you were able to stimulate that economy for a new county and those contractors did very well in this program. So those were some of the examples of bid rigging. But if there's any contractor who felt that he was denied access to do the work, he all, he or she always had a right to appeal and we always present that information to the appeals committee.
Uh, Commissioner Mason? Before you leave, let me just say this, I think I would know we're going. So uh, Viewpoint Health, uh, I still have a record for Viewpoint Health and we do service all ages. Uh, we specialize with people, we specialize with people who uh can't can't afford insurance, that's what Viewpoint Health is. But Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to clarify, uh, uh, it it is historically, you know, over the past three years that sometimes negative narratives are put out there on people. Uh, and uh, I wanna make sure that I address the negative narrative that has just been stated. Uh, me personally, as an individual, as a matter of fact, I support mental health. If you go back and look at our media back in December, uh, we provided a resolution and we gave a resolution uh to a mental health professional who has been in this industry for well over twenty plus years, sits on the state and national board for NAMI, uh, which is uh the National Association of Mental Institute, I always get their acronym incorrect, but they deal with mental health. Uh, as a matter of fact, I'm working with that individual, uh, working with that doc uh to start a mental health initiative here in New York County. Uh, we are actually in the process of launching that mental health initiative as well. So I I I wanted to be put out there that I highly support mental health. As a matter of fact, the mental health initiative that I'm currently working on will address those individuals in the jails. It will also address those uh children that are in our school system, that are on our unsheltered, that have mental health concerns. So it will address all of those mental health concerns that we need. I I want our community to understand as well, the American Rescue Plan Act funds was a one-time fund. The American Rescue Plan Act funds was a one-time fund. It is not the solve-all-in-all. Just because we don't have funds to do everything in the entire county does not mean that we will never get funds from anywhere else. There are other resources and sources out there for funding uh that we as a board should be able to look into to where we can actually get additional funding for mental health. We can even get additional funding possibly starting another senior, senior home repair that's outside of ARCA funds. So I want this board and our community to understand that ARCA is not the end-all, solve-all. And if someone just did not get an opportunity to take advantage of those funds, it does not mean that this board cannot find a creative way to find other funds to possibly do some additional programs. We just got to think outside of the box and look at other options and look at other opportunities and find other ways of funding so that we can continue to do this work. This was just the beginning, it's not the end. And so just because we have ran out of that twenty-one million dollars does not mean, oh, we can never do these type of programs. We can never support mental health. We can never support our seniors because we don't have any ARCA funds. We can find other resources. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And to your point, uh, we recently met with the county manager Cooper about grant initiatives and mental health on that list, as well as any other grants that we think would benefit the county. So, and we will be able to use these ARCA programs as pilots to say to a federal under another grant source, look what we were able to do with ARCA funding. We were able to take four point eight million dollars and assist two hundred and seventy-five, you know, low-income seniors with health and safety issues in their home. Give us more money because there's clearly additional need in the community and we can use that to leverage additional funding to be a grant.
And I do want to add that um, uh, because I do support mental health in jails as well. What I was saying was, is that this board just did not allocate funds towards that specific line item. Not that anyone on this board doesn't uh support mental health in the jail. We support mental health in the jail, but this board just decided not to put any monies in that specific line item. Now, if we had put monies in that specific line item, then it would show on that particular document that I stated. But this board didn't put monies in that line item. So I wanted to make sure that people understood and knew that it's not Commissioner Mason that doesn't support mental health in jail. He does. He's working on a mental health initiative right now that will support mental health in the jail. But we just didn't, as a board, put money in that particular line item. For that's what. And other nonprofits uh that work with the jail, we can find ways to help those nonprofits if they are able to take advantage of the ARCA funding.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner. Y'all, let's move on.
I got one more update.
Well, I'm going to agree. First of all, I just, you know, tell our seniors, the ones who didn't get their home repaired, the hundreds and some people, and the ones who want to quit for it, who turned down. I want to apologize personally to you because I think that um, uh, we should get, we should, we should get better about, about our seniors. I also want to just tell them that I care about you. I'm just trying to just figure out the reasons. And so if there's anyone who want me to continue documenting the, what the needs are in our community, and I'm going to work with Commissioner Sanders and help and try to find a grant so we can continue to help our seniors. And, and whatever we need to do, I'm going to do it. So I'm willing to go and, and put me a tent in front of Hank Jones's office and say, wait, we need some grant money for our seniors, on whom everybody need to, in order to make things happen for our seniors. Because you are my top priority. And one last thing, I think if we get some more grant money, we can look at, well, like we can run an house because I, I still say, and I said it, I just can't even pray did. I think that a million dollars, if we could get a house, about that close to a million dollars more, then we could get more for our seniors. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. One last thing, uh, as we talk about the senior home repairs. When you look at the, the allocation that we put, we put five million dollars.
Twenty-five percent of your allocation.
That's correct. That is the most that you put in any specific line item in the ARCA program. So we put five million dollars. There's no other line item, no other program that we did that we put that much funds in. So the senior home repair was the, was priority. It was the most, and I think this board did a great job. Now, of course, we may not have been able to help every single person. And that's what it is. You may not be able to help everybody, but you want to try to help as many as you can. And so with that five million dollars, I think this board did a great job alongside our consulting staff to really help as many people as we can. Like we increased it from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand. So on an average, seven, each, those residents got seventeen thousand dollars worth done. And so you put a lot into that. So we put the most of the ARCA funds in that specific line item and we did give it to.
Even more than what you spent internally in the county to senior home repair, so.
That's correct. So I just want to put that on record that we did put five million dollars and we did put five million dollars in any other program. So we, as a board, saw that as a priority. And we cared about our seniors and we wanted to do more and we wish we could have done more. So I just want to put that out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. The other thing I want to talk about, um, youth facility. We don't have to, to, to make a decision soon. That money is taken, um, and we've got to let them know what we're going to do. So I know we've discussed this before, but this money took the back.
They stealing the money.
Make a decision with that.
They don't have anything for the youth program. But they set us up a fine for the model.
We got a word.
Special interest in their charity group.
Debt limit and Congress and what's going on.
Nonprofit. They gave so much money out to nonprofit.
Once Congress approves the budget, which would should be in March, assuming that they can all agree. Uh, but that funding will be held up until that happens. Uh, we did get the other funding for the um street safety plan. Um, we're looking for some grant funding for uh senior services, mental health. Housing was also on the list provided. Um, and we're looking at trying to get some community to other block grant dollars uh into New County on a grant side.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders. Actually, folks, to say that on Monday, the um Department of Community Affairs had a grant called Georgia Dream, that's for housing, affordable housing that we should have known about, but we don't know about because every county should know about it. And it's for affordable housing. So if you can get that at the jail.
Yes.
That is available now and actually started the application.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, thank you for being here today.
No problem.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your help there. Thank you for all the work.
Let's uh, number two, Mr. Patrick, if you would take this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you were in agreement with I P metrics, the buyers, the cost for a fee to I P metrics and now ten percent of all funds assigned to programs that are administered by I P metrics. As we well aware, because we just talked about in the last few, like, four months, you know, when it's at eight hundred thousand.
And we could tell y'all the time. I mean, I watched, I go back and watch our video. We did a, we did a total of ten million dollars in direct programming. So that one percent, I mean, the ten percent fee for that is a million. I think it's forty thousand or something over it. What we did afterwards, if you remember, if you recall, you first should put a million dollars in senior home repair. Then you had another meeting and you put two million dollars in senior home repair. And then in the last meeting, you put five million dollars in senior home repair. Our fee did not keep up with you continuing to add those millions of dollars to the senior home repair. So this is the final one that takes into account the five million you had in senior home repair and the five million you had in all the other programs of your.
Thank you. Uh, thank you.
Once again, I want to just apologize to, to the seniors, our seniors uh for us giving away a whole lot of money. Uh, it could be used for the, to help their hundreds and seniors homes that need to be repaired. Uh, here it is suggested when we first started, why couldn't we do like the city coverage? Why couldn't we have in-house pressure to kind of handle that money with some accountants or whatever? Thank you. Or whatever. But instead, we, you know, I just, I, I just thank myself personally, uh, me and our society. And, and we, even though we did good, I think it could have been more good if we did it. So, and I do want to address and hear the complaints of people who didn't get that worked on. So if any of anybody had a complaint and want their home documented, so we can make sure that whatever we can find some more grants or if we can budget a little bit of money every year, budget so I can help those seniors till we get them out. Or if maybe we have more, can you care, Collins, seven, seven, oh, eight, nine, six, three, eight, one, six. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so Patrick, this, this uh increases make us contract, contractual comply, is that correct?
That's correct. It will provide the compensation for the, for the increase in your home repair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much. This is not one of these, I'm ashamed to see you in term of shame, through the special time. But I had an opportunity to have our purchasing director to send me a copy of all the companies submitted for as consultants. And some of them were acting, you know, they didn't want with the program. I read them in detail. And I asked that question from day one. Because I said, it's nothing different since words come. I asked that question that from day one, was the five hundred thousand dollars the cap? I was told yes. And we came back again and we increased it to eight hundred thousand. Now we have twenty million. We had those different consultants who submitted for their bid at this point. And we're doing multiple change, over the back of change, or is New County getting along for it? It's changes. We're long for changes. And so I asked that question. If you go back and watch the video, when we did eight hundred thousand dollars, I asked, was this it? And if you go, no, I look at Friday and I, we were told, yes. And I, I was like, well, all of this fiction to go back and we can watch that video if you're stuck as well. I was told, yes. So I guess I can't be answering saying now we have to pay additional amount, but we had consultants who submitted a bid at the same rate and they were not that eager.
Just wanted to be a point there. So when we did five, we gave a price of four hundred thousand dollars. That did not include direct program administration. That was just consulting on ARCA funding for the twenty-one million dollar total. After the debacle with Salvation Army and the fraud that we uncovered to the tune of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars that came back into the conference of the county, you all asked I P metrics to run these programs because you did not have a community partner that you trusted to run these programs. Obviously, that increased our costs because we had to hire people to do the programs. So that's why the price changed. Had you not asked us to run these programs directly, our fee would have been the four hundred thousand dollars for the life of the grant, the twenty-one, whatever million dollars you all offered you got. I just want to make clarity.
And I'm glad you made that clarity because the reason why I said it had to do with you. Both other contractors had those programs in their bid because they were running them for other states. So they done ARCA already. They had those programs detailing their bids at the million dollar mark. So that's what I'm saying, not going to get short. I didn't mention their bid.
I think what it shows though is that other companies did that million dollars because that's what it would take to get all these programs.
So, let's do this. Let's do this. All in paper. All in paper. Can you vote? Thank you. Uh, next one is going to be this. Uh, Valerie. This is two Valerie.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final reading for Shell, Puma, at fifty-eight, seventy, Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three, zero, two, oh, one, six, for Shanker, Humana, Commissioner Two.
The motion by Commissioner Mason, satisfying Commissioner Eric's in session. All in paper. Pass the file open. Thank you. Next on the deal is citizens coming. This opportunity to do a lot of citizens to come up and make comments. You have three minutes to do so. If you do it, please say the name you had for the working business.
My name is Valerie, this is five, this is your court coverage. I want to give a copy of that report, you know, when you came up to all the money and all this stuff I spent. And uh, it's bold times, ain't it? Chair? Bold times.
That's right, bro.
And uh, Mr. Mason. I think you kind of need to listen to what she was saying that about the money for that gun here. She said it was a police officer. And I was going to portray, you kind of missed something. But you got something, something going on there. Anyway, let's see, anyone else?
Final clarification here again to call you out. The last time I was here, you guys spent over a million dollars. But this time, we're going to talk about ignoring a citizen when we come to speak. Our words, they follow in their ear unless you guys are handing out money. Uh, somebody y'all can give money to, they give them credit. So that's the only time you guys listen to people. And I'm going to give you a good example of that. We've been asking the county manager for a printout, audit how this money is spent. We see a lot of them got it. I asked the chairman about putting these monitors on the wall so they won't be in the people's way out there in the audience so they can see, but they still on the floor. So that's how we know that you guys are not listening to us. And if you do, if anything is Kennedy's say or the county manager say about ARCA, well, I got some saying in the desert to sell you in Saudi Arabia. And that's called like some snake oil sale. And the other thing I want to speak on is the Salvation Army. When you guys gave the Salvation Army back the money, did you guys ask for that money back or did they pay it back? We would like to know that. And these brackets, they're not that expensive. Now, if you guys can walk in and spend a million dollars or plus every month, hang these monitors and get them off the floor and put them up on the walls so that people can see what's going on. And I think that's going to be by the way. And so, uh, Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for listening. I know this is going to blow your head, but like I said, most of the time when people come up here to speak, you guys are not even listening to. Y'all don't respect people. But like I said, it's election time in New County. Get out and vote because you need to make a change about your leadership here because evidently they must not care about when you come up here and less than you can put some money in their pocket or even put something in your pocket. But the average citizen that come up here and complain to you guys, you guys are so disrespectful, you don't even listen to them. So I wish the citizens of New County would get out here and vote, go to the conscience and replace some of these people that's up here because they're not thinking about it. They put the money in the special interest back pocket. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
And um. Good. Um, I have a point. Mr. Benny, I don't say fuck you, I say, oh, yes, sir. Yeah. And um, when this program first came over about the senior repair, the repair, yeah. I have, well, my momma passed in November.
She did?
And I had all the paperwork, the deed to the house, the driving license. I brought everything. But I got an email saying, Ms. Ruby Malongo has been took off the list. Okay, that's fine because I emailed you, I'm being truthful. I emailed you to tell you that she had passed. But when I emailed you, you took my mom off the list. And you took my mom off the list, you took my daddy too. And when I emailed my caseworker, my momma, she asked for. she asked for more information about my dad and about my momma. And I told her, I said, "I brought everything. I brought everything." She was like, "Um, well, we can't do anything about your application because you haven't submitted everything." I submitted everything, everything. Now I come today to ask about the situation again. They informed me, well, um, well, nobody named on the application but your momma's. How is that? Please make it make sense to me. If I brought you the deeds, my momma's that, they married fifty-four years. They live in the same house. Fifty-four years. So how can you take her name? Okay, fine, you took hers because she was sick. But you got my dad's information. You got your social security number, you got everything in the bank statement. How can you take his name off the list my dad has mentioned? I, speaking of real help, I need some. Because I have to beat up. I beat up and my dad had to wake up at three o'clock in the morning. I have to beat up. I'm trying to make a statement for him to be where I can get rest so I can take care of him because I'm not really in a nursing home. No, I'm not. My dad had worked a lot on his life for forty years. And tired. So why he can't get no help? He ain't nothing, government ain't never gave my dad a food share. My mom, nobody. So why they can't get no help around here in New County? We pay taxes.
I know.
We damn, so what's wrong? I see people every single day going to these places. They don't section eight. They get, their light be a pain, they need the water be a pain. What's going on?
Man, so the way it works, you have, uh, three years, uh, to make your.
I'm sorry, but I mean, I'm bad up. I'm bad up. I'm bad up. Yeah.
I'm in session.
Okay.
See, they gonna help her because of her condition. They had been knowing her, her mother had even passed away during that time. Now she came up here to tell them. Now, all of a sudden, they want to reach out. But remember, they said they ran out of money. Now they gotta go back and find some money.
Good evening. Good evening, sir. Credit Johnson, ten, thirty-six, I don't know what's this.
You don't want to hear me, you a bootlicker.
Uh.
I, I will. Just have two things. These tracks, place store, coast guard, or whatever you want to call them. Why don't they go up five dollars a year when our county taxes go up? I don't understand. And the second thing, I found out this a while ago, this board don't control the school board. But when the sheriff comes to y'all and says, "I need forty deputies to maintain, keep deputies on the road," tell them to get them out of the school system because the school system has their own police department. I just found out that a couple days ago when I went vote. I got a picture of a car. When I asked someone about the school board, I mentioned it to the school board. Everybody except for one, because he was asked, it said, "Oh, we don't have a police department." Well, they've had a chief for two years. So the sheriff could be starting to pull some of the deputies out of the schools and telling the schools to get your people. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Commissioner Erickson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll be brief. Uh, uh, Mr. County Manager, if you would, I don't know if you're familiar, but on past law regulations, her, um, uh, clean, clean opinion from our authors, um, no audit findings for interim controls. And, uh, please congratulate her on her behalf. And, and, and just so, uh, to pat the, my fellow members of the, the board on their back on the amount of all of the expenses that is set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner, uh, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to reiterate, um, what our county manager discussed earlier about, please.
See, they congratulating each other, patting each other on the back. But when you come down to, the average citizen, like the man speaker, like the man speaker. See how they ignore them? Barely even recognize them.
Prospect Church at OQ, uh, sixty-seven.
Ain't gonna get for y'all.
Two twelve, Monday through Friday from eight to five. And then Life Point Church of the Nazarene, fifty-one, thirty-three, Jackson Highway, Monday through Friday from eight to five. Uh, Saturday voting on February the twenty-fourth and March the second from nine to five. And then Sunday voting on February the twenty-fifth from eleven to four. Uh, both of those, Saturday and Sunday voting will take place at Turner Lake, uh, location only, uh, for Saturday and Sunday. So I just want to make everybody aware that, uh, this is gonna be for the twenty-twenty-four presidential primary election. Uh, we will have another election that will be, uh, just for the, uh, local primaries, state and federal. But this one is just for the presidential primary election. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, and I have to register the vote, um, actually, it's February twelfth. Since I already passed. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sanders?
First of all, I want to pay homage to the women who paved the way for this last three months. I want to pay homage to Sherri Chitham, who was the first African-American woman elected United States Congress and the first African-American, African-American woman to receive a nomination for President of the United States. Ms. Barbara Jordy, elected to the Texas State Senate, first African-American elected to the State Senate, as well as Michelle Obama, first African-American female to be the first lady of the White House, and as well as Kamala Harris, our first African-American Vice President, first female Vice President as well. I want to pay homage to those women who paved the way for offices and elected officials who have paved the way for offices for us to be able to sit in these seats. I want to thank the constituents, uh, about us being able to travel to various conferences. Why is it important for your elected officials to receive professional development training? Because they receive information that we spoke of, like ranks. If I wasn't that thankful to begin, I would have not got stopped by OSHA, who handed me a paper and said, "You need to immediately bring this back to your fire department because they have until May to respond." And then I brought that information back and long ago, my fire department now you know about the information because we're one of the smaller counties. It's gonna cost us additional funding if we did not comply. As well as with the SBA, who also stopped me and said, "Your, your county communication has two years to comply with ADA information. Their website is ADA." This is why your elected officials need to do professional development. We have the opportunity to meet with over twenty federal agencies who have grants, who have programs for our, which we find out, I'll put that on my newsletter and get to our, our colleagues as well, who have funding, say that people leave their money on the table as they leave the county. There is so much money out there that those other counties traveled with their grant writers. Rockdale County, as well as, uh, Chab County, had their grant writers with them. And once they heard the grants, they were sitting there applying for the grants. These are counties that came together. IT team was there, their communication team, their entire team was at these, this conference, applying for those grants. This is why education is so important for county officials and county, um, and staff as well. Staff was there as well. It is important that we seek this education. We talk about grants, but we're not about grants. We talk about funding and not, uh, overtaxing the taxpayers, but we're not, why? Because we're not doing it. But you look at the elected officials who are doing it and want to seek the funding for our community going out and, and forming our grants. That is a problem. But the reason why we do that is because we go out and seek, we research. Education is important and that's one thing nobody can take away from. Thank you.
Commissioner Erickson?
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I just want to, uh, talk a little bit about Mr. Don White Pace, who, uh, who thought enough of New County to bring, uh, church orphanage. She was a slave. And with what being a slave, she helped the church to do, and I guess at the, at the big house. And so once she was freed, uh, they built a orphanage off that and up down Page Road. She found out that she, uh, she married Mr., uh, Mr. Pace, but she was a wife. And she had a very nice orphanage and helped train kids, graduated from the down college. But just as soon as she died, it's what they wouldn't put a, 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 put a large white plaque in the store to be placed on the property. And she owned all the property at work. And so I don't want to forget about our seniors. I don't want to forget about them because they did so much to make this county great and in all others. I don't want to forget about them. And I think it's a disservice for us, for our seniors, to forget about them when that, when that happened to you, in the, in your age. So I think if a motion come to be, uh, we need to fix that young lady in the house who came here about a day. Mr. Malone, because he did work out his whole life. He did a whole lot in his community. And when you go over to the historic area that are still here, that are not too old, you can't get in here, you see his picture amongst the young men at whose wars to his well on Black East and just try to make a difference so everybody could be remembered and be respected in their lifetime. Thank you.
And, sir, Commissioner Cal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be brief, uh, just want to say it's, uh, it's good to see the spring hill project from along out there. Uh, the chairman and I wrote for there a few weeks ago. And, uh, it's coming along really nice. And I think that, uh, the same thing can be said down the road when we get ready to do the CUSU schools. So, uh, I just appreciate seeing things that come out of the ground like that. So I hope the community will be appreciative of that.
Thanks a lot. Is it a motion that we, your, please?
No.
The motion by Mr. Stevens, the steps, I believe, to Commissioner Erickson. All in favor?